Crystal, Rashad, for their very generous introductions. What I want to do tonight is do something that is not done very often in American politics today. I want to talk to you about the real issues facing us as Americans and how we can go forward. That's a radical idea. I'm not going to attack anybody, I'm not going to make fun of anybody. I'm not going to do it Donald Trump. We're just going to talk about the real issues that impact all of our lives and how we are going together to transform America. But before I do that, let me say a few words about this campaign. Six months ago or so, I decided that I thought it was important that I run for President of the United States. The reason was, very simply and honestly, that I think, given the enormous problems facing our country today, that it is too late for establishment politics or establishment economics. And what I concluded is that if we are going to do the things that have to be done for the middle class and the working people of this country, we needed a political revolution. That it was not good enough that in the last election, thirty-six percent of the American people voted. It was not good enough that eighty percent of young people did not vote. Seventy-five percent of low-income working people did not vote. And what I concluded is that if we are going to transform American deal with the issues that face us all, all across this country, millions of people are going to have to stand up and say loudly and clearly, "Enough is enough." That this country and our government belong to all of us and not just a handful of billionaires. It's only started the campaign, no money, no political organization. My guess is that in South Carolina, eighty, ninety percent of the people here didn't even know what Bernie Sanders was, let alone what I stood for. That's true all over America. Well, the campaign got underway, and when I began, all of these media geniuses decided that Bernie Sanders was a fringe candidate, not to be taken seriously. But then some strange things began to happen. We went around the country, and we had huge turnouts like the one we have here tonight in Nega. And it turns out that as a result of the rallies that were having, like the one here tonight, once in the west coast, where twenty-eight thousand people came out in Fort Worth, Oregon, town meetings we do in Hampshire, and Iowa, Nevada, over three-hundred-thousand people have come out to our rallies and meetings. And just as it seems here today, a lot of those people are young people, are working people, who want a country that is going to provide them with the hope and the beauty that they are entitled to. And then early on in the campaign, we had to make a very difficult decision. Right now, as all of you know, as a result of the disastrous Supreme Court decision on Citizens United, millionaires and billionaires are able to buy elections. And we have to make a decision. Should we do what virtually every other campaign is doing and establish a super PAC? Now, the advantage of a super PAC is that you can get twenty people in a room who are very, very wealthy, and you could leave that room with five million dollars or twenty million dollars, because they can just give you as much as they want. The disadvantage of having a super PAC is you are contributing to the corruption of the American political process. And we made a decision, it wasn't an easy decision, but we made a decision that we would finance this campaign based on contributions from ordinary middle-class and working families. And here's the result of that. At this moment in this campaign, we have raised and received more individual campaign contributions than any campaign in the history of the United States of America. In 2008 and 2012, Barack Obama did phenomenally well. We are actually doing better than he did. Seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand individual contributions averaging thirty bucks apiece. This is a people's campaign. I've been all over the country and talked to so many people. But probably the best compliment that I have received, you know, some guy came up to me and he said, "You know Bernie, what I like about your campaign is you are treating us like we are intelligent human beings." So tonight, I'm not going to tell you a lot of jokes, because I have the reputation to be a grumpy old guy, so I don't want to ruin that reputation. And I'm not going to say hello to all of the politicians in the area. But I am going to talk to you simply and straightforwardly about issues that many of the candidates do not talk about, and much of which you're not going to see on television or on news stations for reasons we can talk about later. And let me begin by talking about an issue to me that has got to be dealt with that cannot continue to be swept under the rug. And that is that today, we live, Americans, in the wealthiest country in the history of the world. But most Americans don't know that, because they're busy working two or three jobs. They're worried about how they're going to send their kids to college or pay for childcare or even pay to go to the doctor. And the reason that most Americans don't know that they're living in the wealthiest country in the history of the world is that almost all of that wealth is controlled by a handful of people. Today, in the United States, we have more income and wealth inequality than any other major country on earth, and it is worse in our country than at any time since 1928. Now, in my view, there is something profoundly wrong, and I want you to hear this, when the top one-tenth of one percent, not one percent, one-tenth of one percent owns almost as much wealth as the bottom ninety percent. There is something profoundly wrong when in America, our people are working the longest hours of any people in an industrialized country. Japanese work very hard, we work longer hours than the Japanese, and yet fifty-eight percent of all new income created is going to the top one percent. There is something profoundly wrong when one family, the Walton family of Walmart's, owns more wealth than the bottom forty percent of the American people. One family. In the last two years, the fourteen wealthiest people in this country have seen their wealth increase by a hundred-and-fifty-billion dollars. Increase in two-year time. That's more wealth than is owned by a hundred-and-thirty-million Americans. Bottom line is, together, we are going to create an economy that works for working families and the middle class, not just the billionaires. And this campaign is sending a simple and straightforward message to the billionaire class. And that is their greed is destroying our country. And our message to them is, you are not going to continue to have it all. You are not going to get huge tax breaks when children in South Carolina and in Vermont go hungry and when we have the highest rate of childhood poverty of any major country on earth. You are not going to get more tax breaks for the rich. You are not going to continue to send American jobs to China and Mexico when millions of Americans desperately need decent-paying jobs in this country. You are not going to continue doing what corporation after corporation is doing, and that is giving huge compensation packages to the CEOs while cutting the wages and healthcare and pensions of their workers. That is going to end. Over the last thirty years, we have seen an interesting economic phenomenon in our country. And that is there has been a massive redistribution of wealth in America. Problem is, that redistribution has gone in the wrong direction. We have seen trillions of dollars flow from the hands of working families into the bank accounts of the top one-tenth of one percent. And what this campaign is about, and what a Bernie Sanders administration is about, is ending that redistribution of wealth from the middle class to the rich and taking it back from the rich to the working families of this country. When we talk about the economy, let me just say a couple of things. It's not only income and wealth inequality. Let's talk for a moment about another very important issue, that is unemployment and underemployment. The good news, and it is very good news, is under-President Obama and some of us in Congress, in the last seven years, we have made real progress in the economy, and the economy is in much better shape than it was when George Bush left office, you know? You know, my, and I say this, you know, to working-class Republicans here in South Carolina and around the country. I want you to think back, and I know that a lot of the Republican presidential candidates, we should have sympathy for this, we should not make fun of people who have an illness, but they seem to be suffering from amnesia. It's a very serious issue. I mean, amnesia is a serious problem, and they kind of forget things. It's not their fault, it's nature of the illness. And if you listen to their debates, they seem to think that every problem on earth, whether it's raining today, whether it's too hot, is caused by Barack Obama. And they're very upset, you know, this month, we created, the economy created about two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand jobs. I would like to see more, but I'll tell you this, what the Republicans seem to forget is that when Bush left office, we were losing eight-hundred-thousand jobs a month. You don't think two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand jobs is enough? Fine, it's a hell of a lot better than losing eight-hundred-thousand jobs. My Republican friends are getting suffering from this very serious illness, and I'm not going to make fun of it. Amnesia's a serious problem, we're working on a treatment for it. They seem to forget, they're very worried about the deficit. You ever stay up nights worrying about the deficit? Yet when Bush left office, the deficit was a record-breaking one-point-four-trillion dollars, and we've cut that by two-thirds. They seem to have forgotten. When Bush left office, maybe most importantly, 2008, the world's financial system was on the verge of collapse, and there were economists who were worried that you're going to put your credit card into an ATM machine and nothing was going to come out, that we really were on the verge of an international financial crisis. Well, that is not the case today. But having said that, recognizing that we are in much better shape than we were seven years ago when Bush left office, there is another reality that we have to discuss as well. And that is that for the last forty years, four-zero years, under Republican and Democratic administrations, the great middle class of this country has been disappearing. And the issues that we have got to ask ourselves is how does it happen that workers in America who are using new and exploding technology, who are much more productive than workers twenty or thirty years ago, why are they working longer hours for lower wages? Why is it possible, if we do not change it, that the young people in this room may well have a standard of living lower than their parents despite the increase in technology and productivity? Why is it that median family income today is four-thousand dollars less than it was in 1999? So our job is to appreciate that we have made progress in the last seven years, but to understand that we have a long way to go. We need to create millions of decent-paying jobs. We should not be firing teachers, we should be hiring teachers. And I just said, with a gentleman who is a teacher. And our teachers in this country do an extraordinary job, and we should all be very grateful for what they do. But I want young people to look at education, to understand that being a great teacher, that helping struggling kids get their feet on the ground and go out and be productive citizens, that there is nothing more important than that. And I know I'm in a football stadium, you all love the football players, but love the teachers as well. And when we have an infrastructure of roads and bridges and rail system and water systems and wastewater plants and levees and dams that are in disrepair, I want to see this great nation rebuild our crumbling infrastructure, and when we do that, we create thirteen-million jobs. And I will, one of the themes of our campaign is not just creating the political revolution and getting your own public, is urging you to think big, not small. Big, not small. There was once a time in American history, not so many years ago, thirty, forty years ago, we led the world in terms of infrastructure, we were cutting-edge. That's not the case anymore. I want you to envision an infrastructure in which we have the best roads, the best bridges, the best rail system in the world, and you're going to help us build that system. And when we talk about unemployment, I want everybody to appreciate that official unemployment is five percent, much lower than it used to be. Real unemployment is not official unemployment. Real unemployment includes those who have given up looking for work and those many millions who are working part-time when they want to work full-time. Add all that together, real unemployment is about ten percent. But I want to now mention something to you against virtually no discussion at all. And that is youth unemployment in this country. It's a not-discussed issue, and some of you are aware of what it means. Couple of months ago, I asked some economists to do a study for me. And I said, "Tell me what real unemployment is for high school graduates between the ages of seventeen and twenty, okay?" Young people graduated high schoo-, not dropouts, graduated high school at seventeen to twenty. This is what they reported back. For white kids, real unemployment and underemployment, thirty-three percent. For Latino kids, thirty-six percent. For African-American kids, fifty-one percent. That is an enormous national tragedy. And I want you to think about what it means. Kid graduates high school, what do they want? They want to stand on their own two feet, they want to go out, they want to earn some money, they want to become independent, they want to get away from their parents, they want to start a life. And yet, millions of young people cannot find a job. And if anybody here thinks that there is not a direct correlation between high, tragically-high youth unemployment and the fact that we have more people in jail than any other country on earth, you would be mistaken. So here is my promise to you. My promise to you is that instead of investing in jails and incarceration, we're going to invest in education and jobs. Instead of having more people in jail than any other country, we're going to have the best educated population on earth. We are spending eighty-billion dollars a year, eighty-billion dollars a year locking people up. It costs a lot more money to put somebody in jail than to send them to the University of South Carolina. Let's send them to the university. And when we talk about the economy, and when we talk about why it is that so many people are working incredibly long hours, you know, you remember reading your history books, that a hundred years ago, workers demonstrated. They marched down the street and had these huge placards. What would they say? What did they want? They wanted a forty-hour work week, a hundred years ago. And today, today, you have millions of people working fifty, sixty, seventy hours a week. And the reason for that is one simple fact. And that is that wages in the United States are just too low. The federal minimum wage is seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. And you can do the arithmetic as well as I can. You multiply seven and a quarter, or eight, or nine, or ten, by forty hours a week, or fifty hours a week, fifty weeks a year, and what you end up is with the sum of money that people cannot survive. That's the simple fact. And that is why we have got to raise the minimum wage to a living wage, fifteen bucks an hour. It is not a radical socialist concept to say that if somebody works forty hours a week, that person should not be living in poverty. And when we talk about fair wages, I hope every man here tonight will stand with the women and fight for pay equity to women workers. There is no rational economic reason why women are making seventy-nine cents on the dollar compared to men. Just old-fashioned sexism, and together, we're going to change. Now, in South Carolina, you see a lot of politicians running throughout your state giving them their speeches. And many of my Republican colleagues talk about their views on family values. Do you know any Republicans talk about family values? They just love families. They stay up nights worrying about things. But you all know, you know what they mean by family values. What they mean is that women should not have the right to control their own bodies, and I disagree. I find it, I find it hard to understand. Now, I have many of my Republican colleagues who are very proud to be conservatives. They hate the government, they want to get the government out of our lives. But they think the government has a right to intrude on some of the most difficult and personal decisions human beings have to make. And when Republicans talk about family values, what they are saying is that our gay brothers and sisters should not have the right to marry. I disagree. This is the year 2015, and people in America, throughout the world, should have the right to love the people they want without discrimination. Now, my wife Jane, we just met a moment ago, and I've been married for twenty-seven years. We have four beautiful kids and seven extraordinary grandchildren. Want to see pictures, come on up. And we believe very strongly, not what I know is more strongly in family than my wife does. We believe in family values, but our values are very different than Republican family values. When I talk about family values, I talk about ending the international embarrassment of the United States of America being the only major country on earth that does not guarantee paid family and medical care. I'm going to tell you what that's about. And I think I don't have to tell any of the mothers here what that's about. Is that right, moms? What it's about is that today in South Carolina, today in Vermont, women are having days. And as a parent, you know, parents know, what an extraordinary And as a parent, you know, parents know, it's an extraordinary day. It is, and it's a pretty big day for the baby as well. But, here's the story. If that mom and if that family have sufficient income, mom can stay home for months and months, get to love and know her baby, and provide the kind of attention that a newborn person requires. But if that mother and dad do not have sufficient income, what happens is that a mother is forced to be separated from her newborn baby, maybe a week, maybe two weeks after that baby is born. That is not a family value. That is the opposite of what a family value is. So together, so together, we are going to allow working-class and low-income moms and dads to stay home with their babies because we are going to pass legislation which guarantees working families at least three months of paid family medical care. And when we talk about the economy, it is not just the need, as I mentioned a moment ago, to create millions of decent-paying jobs. We have got to prevent the loss of decent-paying jobs. You are looking at a senator and a former congressman who voted against NAFTA, against CAFTA, against permanent normal trade relations with China, and will lead the effort to defeat the trans-Pacific bloc. Corporate America cannot continue to shut down plants here in South Carolina or my state in a move abroad. If they want us to purchase their products, the time is long overdue for them to start manufacturing those products here in the United States. Now, there are many, many issues that are out there. And people often ask me, they say, "Bernie, what is the most important issue?" I can't really say that there isn't any one, because all of these issues are somewhat, but there is one issue which impacts every other issue. And that is that five years ago, in a disastrous Supreme Court decision by a 5 to 4 vote in Citizens United, the Supreme Court said to the wealthiest people in this country, they said, "Hey, guys, you already own much of the economy. We are now going to allow you to own the United States government. You can spend as much money as you want in the political process." And what that means is that people like the Koch brothers and their network will spend in this campaign some $900 million. In other words, you have one vote, Koch brothers have one vote, but they got another $900 million to put into the political process. When you have one family spending more money in this campaign than either the Democratic or Republican Party, that's not called democracy, that's called oligarchy, and we have got to end that. My promise to you is that no nominee applying to the US Supreme Court will get that nomination unless he or she is crystal clear in telling the country that they will vote to overturn Citizens United. And it's not just overturning Citizens United and getting back to where we were. What we have got to do, and I believe this passionately, I believe in democracy, and I want everyone in this room, people all over the state, people all over America, who feel strongly about their views of where America should go, I want them to be able to run for office without having to beg wealthy people for campaign contributions. That's why I believe, that I believe in public funding of elections. And when we are talking about elections, let me say a few words about some of what's going on right now. As a nation, we have one of the lowest voter turnouts of any major country on earth. Canada just had its election a week or two ago. 69% of their people came out. In Europe, it's 70, 80%. And we have an election which, for president, maybe 55% vote him, 35% vote. It would seem to me that our job as Americans is to increase voter turnout, not decrease voter turnout. It would seem to me that any governor or member of a legislature who is working to suppress the vote should be ashamed of themselves. And I feel strongly about this because, you know, I run for office. I've run many times as a state senator. Let me just tell you this, I've lost some elections and I've won elections. But it has never once occurred to me to think about how I could create a situation which prevents people from voting just because they might vote against me. And I believe that any Republican governor, and there are many of them all over this country, is staying up nights figuring out how they could deny the vote to poor people, to elderly people, to people of color. I think that if they are so frightened of people coming out to vote, if they are so unable to defend their ideas in a free and open election, they should get another job. We have, as a nation, struggled too much. We have gone too far. We have seen soldiers. We have seen people being beaten and killed fighting for the right to vote. To see Republican governors now trying to take away that right. And here is my pledge to you. And it's a pledge that is so obvious, so common sense that one would expect that everybody would support it. And that is, we need, maybe it's a constitutional amendment, maybe it's not, but we need to move forward to make sure that every American aged 18 and older has the right to vote. End of discussion. Other countries do it, and we can do it. And let me tell you something. If we have voter turnouts in this country of 65, 70, 75%, this country will look a lot different than it does today. The Republican idea of democracy is to suppress the vote and have billionaires buy elections. Our idea of democracy is one person, one vote, and make it as easy as possible for people to participate in the political process. And when we talk about American needs, let's all understand that we are living in a highly competitive global economy. And it makes no sense to me that we do not have the best educated workforce in the world. It makes no sense to me that there are hundreds of thousands of young people in South Carolina, in Vermont, all over this country who have the ability, who have the qualifications, but are not getting a higher education for one reason and one reason other. And that is their families' lack of funds. And that is why I have introduced legislation and will make happen as president a process by which every public college and university in America is tuition-free. Obviously, that idea is important. This'll make life and the finances of a lot of young people easier. But I'll tell you why it is even more important. I want you to listen to this. I know that in South Carolina, and I know that in my own state, there are young people all over this country whose parents never went to college. My parents never went to college. And these are kids who grow up in communities where there are very few people who have gotten a higher education. These kids, in the 4th grade, in the 6th grade, they understand that under current circumstances, they're not gonna make it to college. College is as far away as the moon. I'd want every kid in this country, regardless of the income of his or her family, to know that if he or she studies hard and does well in school, yes, they will be able to make it to college. And we're also gonna deal with another higher education financial issue, and that is student debt. We have millions of people in this country paying interest rates on their student debt of 6, 8, 10— I talked to somebody the other day, 11, 12%. Now, here we are, right? There it is, you got one right there. All right, what's your interest rate?
Uh, mine?
Yeah.
It's currently at 8.5. 8.5!
8.5, all right. Now, I don't want to do an auction, you'll go around and— what is your interest rate? I'll go— but here's the story. You can refinance your home for 2, 3%. Why are people paying 8, 10, 14% interest rates? So what we are gonna do in our legislation is something pretty simple. We're gonna say, you're not gonna be stuck for the rest of your life at those high interest rates. You can go out and get the lowest interest rates you can. Now, if we provide free tuition at public colleges and universities and we substantially lower interest rates on student debt, it's a pretty expensive proposition, about $70 million a year. You know, we're gonna pay for it. We're gonna pay for it based on a tax on Wall Street speculation. When the greed, when the greed and recklessness and illegal behavior of Wall Street drove this economy into the worst recession in the modern history of America, Wall Street went begging the Congress and the middle class, and they said, "Bail us out, bail us out." Well, it's time now for Wall Street to help Bill it bail out the middle class of this country. And when we talk about our responsibilities as human beings and as parents, there is nothing more important than leaving our planet healthy and habitable for our kids and our grandchildren. This is an issue, the issue of climate change is an issue of huge, huge consequence. And I want everybody here to know that the debate is over. The scientific community is virtually unanimous. Climate change is real. It is caused by human activity and carbon emissions. It is already causing devastating problems in our country and all over the world. We have a moral responsibility to work with China, with Russia, with India, with countries all over the world in transforming our energy system away from fossil fuel to energy efficiency and sustainable energy. And we need, we need you, young people, and not-so-young people, to help us in that effort. We know what has to be done. It's not rocket science, we know what has to be done. We know that the cost of solar energy has plummeted. We know that states like Iowa now get close to 40% of their electricity from wind turbines. We know that in my state of Vermont, we're using geothermal. We know that we can weatherize homes and make them much more efficient. We know that we can create a transportation system far, far more efficient than what we have today. Build the greatest rail system in the world, take trucks off the road. But interestingly enough, interestingly enough, the reason we are not moving as aggressively as we should— and by the way, I want to applaud President Obama for making it clear this Keystone Pipeline is not gonna work. But we have a very unusual situation. Here's the situation. We have the Republican Party now controlling the House and the Senate. And when they talk about climate change, oh, they're not scientists, they don't know, they're in doubt. You know what's really going on? It's not that they are in doubt. It is that if Republican candidates stand up and say, "You know, I talked to scientists, I read the literature. Climate change is real, and we have got to be aggressive in transforming our energy system." Do you know what happens to them the day after they make that statement? Their campaign funding stops from the Koch brothers and ExxonMobil and the big-money interests. So my message to the Republican candidates for president and Republican members of Congress, stop worrying about your campaign contributions. Start worrying about your children and your grandchildren.